We will begin the November 21 Chesapeake Beach Town Council meeting. I'll start by noting for the record that the entire Town Council and Mayor, except for Councilman Fabre, are present. I'd like to ask every first responder in this room to lead the town in a pledge of allegiance. Okay, is there a motion to approve the agenda? All in favor?
Aye.
Any ayes have it? At this point, we'll ask, is there anybody in the audience that has a comment to make on the agenda? Hearing none, I'll move forward. Could I be what?
I just wasn't sure if she had us ready to go.
Appreciate you keeping an eye on me. Full-time job. Okay. Approval of the minutes of the October 17 Town Council meeting.
No moved.
Second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Is there a motion to amend, I understand?
No, that's for the work session minutes.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any ayes have it? Approval of the minutes of the October 17, closed executive session.
Go through.
Second. All in favor? Aye. Any ayes have it? And lastly, approval of the minutes of the November 12 work session. Is there a second?
Second.
An amendment?
Yes, I apologize for throwing this in late. And it's a very small thing, but when I made my lightning round comments, I was not quite as composed as I would have liked. But there is a, for the sake of posterity, I would like to ask that this be amended to read the incredible support that has been shown for him and for Charlie and his wife. Because that was the main point of what I was trying to say. It's a small change, but I would ask if we can that we amend them to reflect that.
Second.
Second.
Okay. Approve the amendment?
Aye.
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 Approve the minutes?
Aye.
Aye. Good job. Thank you. Next, we'll move into our next part of the meeting. Way back in the day, we had a woman who sat right here where Keith is. Her name was Barbara Jo Finch. She had a gleam in her eye back in the late 80s, early 90s that Christmas should be special for Chesapeake Beach. She really found it, the Christmas lights display, the ceremony that we have every year light up the lights with Santa Claus. She loved children. She had how many of her own? Ten, I don't know. She's had, you know, 20 some grandchildren, doesn't some great-grandchildren, a great's on the way, a great-great is on the way. And we lost her. So while her memory will live on, I promise you that, and you'll see that when we do the light up the ceremony December 1st, we will. Her name was Mother Christmas. That was her nickname. One day, one time, the Baltimore Sun did an article on the Chesapeake Beach lights. That's how popular they were. And the front page of the Metro section, Baltimore Sun, read headline, "Mother Christmas." And it had our very own Town Councilwoman, Barbara Jo Finch. She passed. Her memory will live on, but I do want to take a moment of silence for Mrs. Finch, if you will. Thank you very much. And she had a great life. She passed at the dear old age of 92, so she, you know, she did very well by us, and she was a very happy woman to the end. Next brings us to a very, you know, tragic event in a, probably the most tragic event in the history of this town, maybe, or at least 100 years. On April 3rd, because of a fire, we lost the lives of Wendy Welsh and Stephanie Link. We're here tonight, okay, to honor, if you will, the entire first, you know, responder crew, if you will, because there's just so many, that, you know, came out and basically saved other people from perishing that day. We would have lost many more lives if not for the men and women who came out on their own time and put out that fire, did what they had to do, you know, cleaned up, got all the hazardous, you know, chemical, all this other stuff that you guys are trained to do and do, came out and did that tirelessly, tirelessly for days, you know, at your own health risk, I might add, you know. This group not only includes you all out there, it includes our own town employee, Jay Berry. It was amazing, and we're here tonight to pay homage, if we can, in what little way. It'll never, you know, we can never thank you enough. We can't put into words. We can't give you anything to thank you for what you did, but we can sure as heck try, you know. So what I want to do is, first, I want to recognize Gretchen Harmon, who's here from Governor Hogan's office, right there. I'm gonna have her come up in a second, and Sharon Humm, who helped put this whole thing together. So I'd like to give these two ladies a hand for what they did.[396.12][396.12](Applause). They've been working on this for quite some time, and I know that because I saw the emails. I didn't do the work. I just saw the emails, you know. And I believe that Gretchen has a proclamation from the governor to come up and read and present to town.
Do you see that now?
Yes, ma'am.
(Inaudible).
I don't see why not.
Well, first of all, thank you for including us in this event. I don't think I, I don't think I need to let the first responders here know how much you all have a special place in Governor Hogan's heart. He has so much gratitude for the first responders and supports you. Anyway, in this citation, and it's a tragic event like this that really brings the good and shows us how much good is in the world, really, despite what the media is trying to do to us. But anyway. The state of Maryland, Governor of the state of Maryland, to the town of Chesapeake Beach residents and first responders. Greetings. Be it known that on behalf of the citizens of the state in recognition of a tribute to honor and applaud the valiant efforts and support and support of the residents of the Chesapeake Beach community and the demonstrated heroism of Southern Maryland's firefighters and emergency first responders who came together to battle the tragic April 2019 town home fires and worked diligently to deal with the devastating aftermath and cleanup. Our citizens will be forever grateful for your courageous service. We are pleased to confer upon you this governor's citation on this day, signed by Lawrence J. Hogan Jr., Lieutenant Governor Boyd K. Rutherford, and Secretary of State John C. Woben Smith.
Thank you very much, and thank the governor for his, as Gretchen mentioned, you know, the governor's a man of his words. He fights for first responders, law enforcement, every day. Read the papers. He don't care who gets in his way. He gonna fight for you, you know. We're gonna have like some group pictures, you know, later. I'll call you up, and then if you wanna hang around, you can keep it. Well, I lose everything. Okay, we, now we have a proclamation. We have, we have proclamations for, you know, members of the audience. I've asked, we're lucky to have a first responder as a member of our Town Council. Councilman Larry, most of you know him. He's a, he's a member of North Beach Volunteer Fire Department. Larry's gonna read the proclamation, and then we'll proceed to the individual awarding of it. So Larry, if you don't mind reading them.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor's given me the honor of reading his proclamation, and I'm proud to do it. Proclamation of the Chesapeake Beach Mayor and Town Council, recognizing first responders to the courtyards at Fishing Creek Townhouse fires. Whereas the town of Chesapeake Beach fatally, fatally lost two residents, Wendy Welsh and Stephanie Link, during the April 3rd, 2019 fires in the 3800 block of Gordon Stennett Avenue in Chesapeake Beach, and whereas moments just prior to the arrival of the fire companies, Wayne Wallace, Maintenance Tech with Chesledine Management Consulting, alerted residents of the townhouses to evacuate, and whereas first responders from the North Beach Volunteer Fire Department arrived on scene, along with Prince Frederick Volunteer Fire Department Rescue, Solomon's Volunteer Rescue Squad Fire Department, Dunkirk Fire Department Rescue Squad, Huntington Volunteer Fire Department Rescue Squad, St. Leonard Volunteer Fire Department Rescue Squad, Calvert Advanced Life Support, and Maryland State Police, with backup assistance from Anarundel County Stations 1, 5, 9, 40, and 42, and Prince George's County Fire Station 845, bravely battled the fire, incurring multiple injuries, and whereas Jay Berry, Town of Chesapeake Beach Public Works Director, provided onsite assistance to firefighters to ensure awareness of structural failure risks, and whereas Calvert County Office of Emergency Management Deputy Director of Public Safety Alfred B. Jeffrey III, and Calvert County Office of Emergency Management Specialist Shelley Gooding, worked tirelessly to ensure residents had the services that they needed in coordination with the American Red Cross, and whereas through local private donors and the Calvert County Department of Social Services, the town of Chesapeake Beach coordinated for the receipt of monetary donations through United Way of Calvert County for donations of over $50,000 to benefit the nine families displaced by the fire, and whereas Calvert Family Advocates provided families with school clothing, Calvert County Public Schools provided transportation, and Calvert County Intervention Services provided services to families. Now therefore be it proclaimed that on this 21st day of November 2019, the Chesapeake Beach Mayor and Town Council recognize and honor the brave men and women that put their lives at risk to save others and the proficiency of the local emergency management professionals.
Thank you, Larry. And I just want to thank everybody in the audience for this.[747.13][747.13](Applause). And we thank you. We really do. Now, what I'm gonna do is, we have individual proclamations of what was just read, and I'm gonna pull out some names or organizations, and if you can, you know, just come up and have somebody, we'll do that. And then I'm gonna get some group pictures. You always, you come here, you're gonna get a picture taken. That's just the way it is, you know. If a politician don't get his pictures taken somewhere, he's not happy, so, you know, that's the way it is. Let me begin with, and I'm going in no special order, I'm just going in order of the proclamation. Wayne Wallace? Wayne is the Maintenance Tech with Chesledine Management Consulting. And you alerted the residents of the townhouses there. Well, sir, you obviously, like I said earlier, you saved lives, so you can sleep well at night, sir. Thank you so much. Anybody here from my favorite volunteer fire department, North Beach? Anybody show up? Chief Mills. Chief Chris Mills, my dear friend. Sir, thanks for all you did. Thanks for all you do, you know, you're the best. It's safe to say that Chesapeake Beach loves you, sir. You tell Mike Benton to try to top that, right?[842.32][842.32](Applause). Thank you, chief. Prince Frederick Volunteer Fire Department and Rescue Services. One's for you. Thank you. For what you did. Saved lives. Okay. Solomon's. Who do we have from Solomon's? Okay. If you don't mind, tell us your name as you go up there, sir. I'm sorry, I should have said that before. Thank you, chief. You? Thank you for saving lives and your service.[892.32][892.32](Applause). They come down here for every single run.[901.57][901.57](Laughter). You light a match and Dunkirk is down here. Okay, we'll get them, we'll get them one. Huntington. Or, as they said in the old days, hunting town. If you don't mind saying your name there, sir, for the record.
Chief.
It's an honor.
Thank you, chief. Thanks for saving lives.[934.32][934.32](Applause). St. Leonard. We'll get them theirs. Calvert Advanced Life Support. McCopkin, thank for them. And I know we have somebody here from MSP. Maryland State Police. Lieutenant Mearns. Thank you. Thanks for all you do every, every day.[963.32][963.32](Applause). We got some backup assistance from Anarundel County Stations 1, 5, 9, 40, and 42. We got anybody here from Anarundel? These, are you guys all different?
All different.
Okay, well, let's recognize each of you. Chief Mike King.
Battalion 3, Anarundel.
Great. Okay, we'll do one at a time. Chief, thanks for coming down and saving lives.[994.32][994.32](Applause).
Captain Gary Weiss from Company 9.
Captain, welcome. Thanks for what you do.[1006.82][1006.82](Applause).
Lieutenant Matthew Gutman, Company 42.
Okay, thank you.[1017.32][1017.32](Applause).
Pump operator, Dave Weins, Company 42.
And we got Anarundel. Prince George's County Fire Station 845. Anybody here from Prince George's? Okay. Who else I got left? Well, our very own Jay Berry.[1053.32][1053.32](Applause).
Jay Berry.
I saw the video. I know what you did. Thank you, Jay. Appreciate it. Thanks for all you do.[1067.32][1067.32](Applause). Alfred Jeffrey III. Get Alfred his. Shelley here?
Yeah.
Shelley Gooding, the Calvert County Office of Emergency Management Specialist.
Shelley Gooding.[1085.15][1085.15](Applause).
The Shelley, right? There we go. Thank you so much. Thanks for what you did, you know. And if you could, I think the first young man in the back there, he didn't get a chance to announce his name to everybody.
Wayne Wallace.
Wayne, get on up here. Not, where's he at? All the way in the back.
Captain Mike Moore.
Thank you, captain. Good. Okay, so before we, you know, have you all up, if you will, for some pictures with the governor's representative and then the council, I don't want to leave before I give a special thanks to North Beach Volunteer Fire Department Chief, Chris Mills, Town Administrator Holly Wall, and Jay Berry, as they continue to partner with Calvert County with recommendations to reduce the potential risk of future loss of life, as well as to improve citizen fire preparedness. So these, and anybody, and a lot of other people are still working hard to make sure that a tragedy like this never happens again. So I, with them, I just want to thank everybody.[1162.32][1162.32](Applause). Now, I think what I'd like to do first is bring up, you know, Governor Hogan's representative and have a picture with her and the, and the group, all y'all. Everybody come on up. Let's get a picture. Let the governor know. Council 2.
Thanks. I'm gonna have to, Shelley, I'm gonna have to gather in. Yes, you do. Absolutely.
That's a big group.
I don't think we're gonna get like this.
Yeah.
Yeah, you guys are gonna have to, like, maybe some of you step up behind or something? Yeah, because we, I'm not getting a good picture at all like this. It's kind of everywhere.
Can you move a bench?
Well, we could do that. Yeah, because I still can't see them even. Yeah, we're gonna have to do something different. I'm sorry.
We gotta re-manipulate. You guys come on here. You're not tall enough. (Laughter).
What about now?
I think I've heard that before. Let's, yeah, let's try to get, yeah.
Do we get more people in the back?
Well, they're not tall enough. Let's try this, Jay. Jay, let's, let's try this, what we're doing here. Maybe, maybe we get, maybe another bench yet, and we get some, yeah.
Design this town hall all wrong.
Exactly. That's right. Okay, so who's gonna sit down?
Who's tired?
Okay, just tell people? Okay, yeah. How about, how about the shorter people sit down? There you go. Just some more.
Act like you like each other. Somebody sit right here. There you go. One, three more here.
Okay. My goodness. It's still a big picture.
Videos.
This is a nice group. All right. We got the way.
First responder. You want to take turns?
Yeah. Good, good thing. All right, I think we've got everybody in there. Nice group.
Can we go home on?
Your thing is over there.
Yeah.
All of you honored guests that actually have a life, we're gonna take like two minutes and... Thank you. We appreciate it. You know, we hope that you're down there.
Yeah. To all of you.
And we don't have to do this again.
I wanna let y'all know I did help Jay put some oysters out the other day.
Thanks again to all of you.
Mayor, I'm gonna leave you this. Would you like this?
Yeah, yeah, we'll take it. You're welcome to stick around, but if you've got to hit the road, we understand. Hit the road, you can read the minutes later. Oh, okay, yeah, yeah, well, you know, just keep in touch. Very well. Thanks again. Everybody appreciate it. Like I need a break. I was very emotional. I was just really, went all over the place all afternoon, you know. Sharon grabbed me around 5 o'clock, Sharon, and she says, "You got your speech all ready?" And I said, "What speech?" And she said, "You mean you ain't read that proclamation I wrote yet?" I said, "I think I read it. Let me take a peek at it one more time." But it's, it's, it's been a, for seven months, you know, seven and a half months, it's been quite the whirlwind in this town. It, it brings people together. I think you realized, you know, that, you know, small stuff don't matter, and everything's small, you know. So let's proceed. I do want to recognize North Beach Town Council member Mickey Hummel, over there in the back. Hey, Mickey, thanks for coming. And we'll, we'll go on with our meeting. North Beach Volunteer Fire Department, if you have any questions of Chris Mills, he just left. So, you know, catch him next month. If you have anything, just, you know, send it to Larry, and he'll...
Say one thing?
Yes, you can, sir.
As most everyone knows, we did have a fire at the laundromat next to the fast stop this past weekend. It was relatively minor. There was no, in fact, I think the laundromat is back open at this point, but it was sort of scary at the time. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. You've all read the deputies' report. Do we have any questions of Lieutenant Naughton? Yes, sir.
There was one overdose, non-fatal overdose, this past month. Can you tell us a little bit about where that was?
This past month?
I think so.
There was one on E Street.
October, yeah.
October. I'm not exactly sure where the one in October was.
Okay.
But there was one this month on E Street.
E Street.
I can find out for you before I get out of here. I'll go out and run it in the computer real quick.
Okay, that'd be great. Thank you.
Is that all you need to know?
That's all I need. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Other first report. We've read Jay's report. Do we have any questions of Jay?
I just had one note that, you know, we're heading into the cold weather, and you know this is something that's affected a lot of folks. Do we have a mechanism to send out reminders to make people alert or aware that, you know, with cold weather comes frozen pipes? Is there any mechanism we have to do something like that?
Actually, there is, and we, and we do do that, and it's getting about that time. We send out an e-blass and some notifications, some stuff we put together, so, yep, we do do that.
That's great, and we'll make sure that we spread those around our community.
Hey, Jay, I had a question. I think that at Kellums, the, I think the town was planning on grassing in a small baseball diamond. What is the status on that?
Holly might be able to speak to that more than, better than me.
The county was not in favor of doing that. They still have T-ball teams that are using the small baseball diamond, so as of right now, it's, it's not being removed.
Kind of what I thought. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Code Enforcement report. We've read Connie's report. Do we have any questions for Connie? Hearing none, I'll move on. Town Engineers report. We've read Paul's reports. We'll start with Valerie and work our way around, or...
Hey, Paul. You know what I'm gonna ask about? The dredging. I noticed the diagram, and are they considering seriously looking at the change in the structure of the jetties?
They, yes, so they...
Or can you provide an update?
Yeah, maybe that's a better way to say it. I haven't seen the final plans, although they've only given me a detail, which they, based on our input, gave them, they have looked at doing, I hate to use the word watertight because that's what it's gonna be, but to make a more tighter jetty, so that sand can't go through it as easily. It'll be more of a barrier. The biggest problem that they have found, they did some studies on the migration of the material, they had Geotext come down, take samples of what's the materials, went over Fishing Creek, and they're finding the same material that's south is sitting in the creek, so, which we know, some mystery. So they believe that this will significantly help migration to not move into the creek from the south, which is a problem. I'm told they have three scenarios. They haven't provided us with them yet. Um, one does relocate the jetty. Um, one raises the jetty and elongates it, and one just raises it. Haven't seen them, they did provide the detail because of our concern with the migration. Um, and they're getting pricing, so, out of those, we're supposed to be getting some sort of update on the three scenarios and the pricing and how they're gonna match up against their budget.
So, um, just so I make sure that I understand well, um, so they're actually looking at potential changes to the structure of the jetties where they're located and how, to ensure that the flow allows us potentially not to have to dredge nearly as much.
Correct.
So I wanna thank you for following through on that, because, um, we talk about dredging a lot.
Yep.
Um, the creek is filling in quicker and quicker. And anything that we can do long-term to help mitigate this, um, expense and also help the watermen, I think is a, it's wonderful. So, thank you so much for following through, if you need any more support, you know, as the three different ideas of designs, just keep pushing, keep pushing to make sure that, you know, with the goal of limiting the amount of dredging or-
I, I did have a, um, as I do yearly, a lunch meeting with, uh, esteemed Oire, and, um, they will, he will be fighting again to get us dredge money. So I can't guarantee it's gonna be in the next fiscal year, but he is gonna put it in. So, stay tuned, keep pushing.
Yeah, and I think the other thing we need to continually push for is, um, continual surveys, to show how quickly it's, it's filling in, to show the proper depth, bring in the, the Coast Guard, you know, just keep it going.
Well, it's great, I mean, they have a great relationship with DNR. Um, and Holly works with them, talks to them constantly, and they'll come down to a survey for us whenever, you know, they're reasonable, but, you know, so it's good.
Thank you, thank you.
Uh, two comments, uh, one is on the, um, 261 sidewalk, we discussed this at the work session, and it talks about, uh, state requested a few additional tasks, a different wall concept before going to the final design.
Right, right.
I sort of understood that while that's gonna cost us some money upfront in the thirty percent, it may result in a reduction in the final design because they're basically moving some tasks forward, is that a correct understanding?
Yes.
Okay.
In a nutshell, the state has approved design type walls, so they have a linear list of, here's the type of walls that we'll approve in, in our right of way.
Right, but we're having the-
A being the cheapest, Z being the most expensive, not every wall works at every application. So they've basically said, hey, go back, just do a little bit more to see if we can advance the ball a little bit now and push the wall in a direction that is the most cost-effective possible.
Yeah, I understand that, but it was more of the money issue of, it looked like we were having to pay more upfront, but that will hopefully reduce some of the final design costs.
Absolutely.
But, second comment, just for everyone's purposes on the water and sewer manual, uh, I attended the last meeting on planning and zoning, and they did approve the changes to the water and sewer manual, so that will be coming to our group sometime soon, so, I know you're all terribly excited about that, something to look for.
We all were gonna ask that question if you didn't, you didn't bring it up.
Thank you.
Yes, Greg.
Evening, Paul. On the, uh, the dredging there, I looked over the, the, the attachment map number two, that was produced by-
The Corps.
The Corps, okay. I've had the pleasure of being on a couple field trips, uh, where I've learned some things about the jetties, um, people talk about trying to swing jetties in and out. All things considered, for me, it just kinda seems you swing one one-way, A, B, and C are gonna happen, you go the other way, D, E, and F are gonna happen. I'm glad to see that they're moving forward, at least, I think the sketch that was included looked like it was to leave the jetties in the same place, but kind of level them off and reinforce them, to keep the, making them less permeable.
I think the, the takeaway here is that we impressed upon them that that sand is an issue and will continue to be an issue, and they need to do a better job, no matter where it gets placed by their analysis, to keep the sand from migrating. So this is what they came up with. I'm not saying this is gonna be the final design, but they're on the right track.
Right.
For sure.
Agreed.
Yeah.
Um, regarding the 261 sidewalk, he made a comment that, I forget the, the phrase you used, but, uh, S H A has some boilerplate profiles of walls, I guess. Can you confirm that the initial design that was provided to the town from the A I, um, the profiles that they included were from those boilerplate lists, or was it, was it outside of what they expect to see?
Yeah, I've asked them for additional information on the walls to, to make sure that they have run through, just like you would, you know, do yourself, you'd run through the checklist and say, okay, this one's applicable to this situation, but it may not be the most cost, you know, do your due diligence through, and they're gonna provide that to us.
Right.
I think they did, but I, and I'm not sure it was clear. But it's always worth another look, because what you may think's the best solution may not be the most cost-effective, it may be a solution, so, we wanna be sure, because that's one of the most expensive, that and the, the bridge is gonna be the two most expensive parts of this project, so.
I just wanted to-
We wanna make sure we're spending the money.
Confirmation, well, that they're, the money that the town has spent in this first presentation that they've given the group, um, is not from some out-left-field idea that it's from-
No, no.
Main stage, state highway.
It is an approved, it is an approved wall that they proposed, it's just that, um, one of the bridge reviewers from Oots, who's an agency inside, said, hey, let's just do a double check, run a couple more cross-sections, which is more than we typically would do, to see if this is the most cost-effective design to move forward with.
Sure, that sounds good. Um, my last question, Holly may wanna answer that, I just, I had a question about if there was any update from the county on the rod and reel construction? Any issues that the town should be aware of, or everything going great?
Don't have any particular issues, not sure what you're asking.
It's just like an update from them, that it's, everything looks good, I've heard, uh, through some of my colleagues in the industry, there've been a lot of permit changes, and that could be something really small. So I'm not trying to speculate that anything major's been changed, it just, uh, would be nice to hear from the county that through their inspection processes, that, uh, everything is, uh, going per the permit plans.
I know they have their use and occupancy for the garage, and it's per code.
I guess that meaning the county signing off and everything, they're accepting? That sounds fine, okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
I have a question.
Questions, I-
Okay, that's okay.
Got jumped, uh, Larry took my spot.
Not that you're mentioning names.
The first question is, uh, first question's about the heritage. So I just, um, you know, maybe this holdover from old days in planning and zoning, I mean, they are taking a long, long time, so is there something we need to know about there?
It's an extremely difficult dirt job, if that makes any sense. A lot of earthwork with wet soils, and they have the soil types there, without getting a lot of detail, it, it's not easily worked in wet weather. Or weather that, uh, is not conducive to drying quickly. So if you get caught in times when, let's say you get a rain and it's overcast, there's no wind, they can't disc, there's not enough areas, it, it just takes longer. I know they did have a holdup with, um, uh, product, so the builder that was gonna actually build the houses, they had changed, they got some delay there. But I don't think it was anything- Time is money for these guys, believe me, if they could do it quicker, they would, but it's been tough for them, I think, with the dirt.
Yeah, not, I guess there was some concern about whether they were, um, following the right rules in the way they were doing the grading, uh, that, that, that they weren't gonna create a hazard in the future, I think some of the cliff slope problems brought citizens out to say, are these things being done right, or at least is there some oversight, so-
I haven't done that, I mean, I haven't heard that, but they provide us as required during your approval, uh, with geotechnical reports, they have a full-time geotechnical engineer there from, uh, GTA, who's a highly reputable local, um, firm, and they provide us with, uh, reports every other week, um, to ensure that they're doing proper compaction, um, which is the main issue that we've had in other places. And they also coordinate with Jay, I know that he had a meeting today with them on, on utility installation, that's really not something that we typically do, this is town, it's really a county function. However, we stepped it up a little bit knowing all this, and, uh, so we do have oversight there. I mean, they're steep slopes, there's no question, but I think we're doing everything we need to do to make sure that they're gonna do it right.
Okay, that's a good answer then, thank, thank you. Uh, the other question I had was about the water and sewer manual, uh, there was a question raised about some fees, um, and the structure of those fees, so I'm assuming that we will see a copy of this in a work session?
Yes, we're gonna work it in a work session.
Perfect, okay, then, then that's all I have, thank you.
Sure, thanks.
Uh, one more question.
Yes, sir.
Right down here, thank you.
I was looking to see if you were raising your finger and-
I was, I did. So, just need some clarification on the, on the, um, dredging part. At the very end, talks about, uh, they may contact Chesapeake Station HOA to see if they want sand on their beach.
Right.
So, uh, am I correct to presume that, that, that sand would be tested and, and-
So it's the sand that's sitting right out in front? Right now?
In front of what?
Typically sits right in front of Chesapeake Station.
Yeah, so that's-
Bling there right now, basically what happens is they, in the past, would dredge the channel, and the material that wasn't sand, they would take it to the dredge spoil facility of the town, and the material that is sand, they would pump it down to Bayfront Park. And then Mother Nature takes over and says, hold on, and they bring, it brings it right back up, and two in front of- So, uh, they reached out and said, we have to get rid of this material, I'm wondering if you guys, or your HOA, would be interested in having your beach back.
Right.
And I said, well, they might or might not, I don't know, and I passed on the information of the-
Okay.
So I don't know if they contacted-
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure if they have or not either, I was just curious because some of the reports I have heard about when the dredge sand was taken to Brownies Beach, that actually there was a lot of silt in it, and it actually left basically kind of that muddy base, instead of sandy base in a lot of the areas down there, and so I just wanted to check on what, what exactly, you know, how silty this sand was.
The little borings that they did out in front, right in around the jetty, it was pure sand.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I mean, it was, it, it isn't like sugar sand, it was a heavier coarse sand.
Okay.
But, you're, yeah.
Alright, I was just curious, thank you, to follow up with your HOA.
Definitely.
Thank you. We've read Marilyn's water park report, do we have any questions? Slow season, thank you Marilyn. Water Reclamation Treatment Plant Report, we've read John's report, do we have any questions to John, Valerie, please?
It's, it's more of a thought, and, um, seeing the, the water and the high tides that we've had, um, this is my thought, is that it seems like every thirty years we need a new plant, and we might wanna consider in this budget cycle, putting aside maybe a little money, um, as almost like a placeholder, because at some point in time, if water continues to increase, we might find ourselves in a position where the wastewater treatment plant at some point in time, twenty or thirty or forty years from now, needs to be relocated. And it's just a thought, but it would probably be prudent to have a long-term plan, which is obviously part of the comprehensive plan, I would think. But from a town council perspective, as the budget cycle nears, what we could do is start putting a little bit of money into a separate line item, the same way that we have a dredge account. And if and when an opportunity ever appears, and I'm not saying that there is any right now, to purchase property that's on a higher elevation, where if we ever do in twenty, thirty, forty years have to move the wastewater treatment plant, we would have property in that, you know, we could start long-term planning now, um, in that eventuality. So I was thinking about it in the wastewater treatment plant report, because it just made sense to me, that this is a good place to bring that up, that as we work through the budget cycle, um, you know, if the, you know, one never knows what opportunities are gonna present themselves. And if we have that foresight, I think our grandkids may appreciate it. Because in ten, fifteen years, somewhere maybe a piece of property becomes available, we have the money set aside or some portion thereof. We, uh, might not need it right then, um, but we could buy the property and then put a park or something on top of it, playground, uh, whatever, until we actually need to potentially make a move. I think long-term planning like that would be useful and beneficial.
Thank you. Sure. You, you let, you let Larry know if something comes up there, you, you, send him a text.
John, I was a little distressed at the, uh, first entry in your report on the T E C work on the P A C L tanks. Uh, has there been any satisfactory resolution of that? This is, uh, very disappointing at best.
Well, we've gotten, um, down to where we just have a few more items to work out down there, but that put us back a couple steps.
I guess it would.
Uh, we were moving pretty good, and we were on schedule to have that thing done in another month or so, and, but now we, we had to take care of the fiber line and I had everything checked out, so we're back on schedule to have that thing completely back online again. Probably within the month.
And I guess a question for Holly, Holly, do we have any contractual hammers on these folks?
Yes, I'll look into that.
Yeah, I'll get with you because with the, um, I do have a couple ideas.
Okay, alright, and then, um, once again, as normal, with all the flooding that we had, which I've never seen it that bad during this period that you're reporting here, the fact that you, uh, no spill occurred, and there were no, uh, no spills, no overflows, is amazing, amazing, very well done, thank you.
Audible, thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Thank you, John. I don't believe we have a treasurer's report?
Yeah, but Mayor, could I make a couple comments? Um, I wanna make everyone aware, the audit is still going on, they're just about to wrap up, we should be final next week. And once we get the final audit reports, obviously, we'll provide that information to Town Council. Had a number of conversations with them, I don't believe anything material's gonna come out, uh, it's just taken them a long time to complete the audit. The second thing I wanted to mention is, as we get around this time of the year, we're always talking about the over expenditures for the previous fiscal year. Uh, last year, we did it in January, I was waiting to complete the audit to make sure they didn't make any changes to any of the budget line items, once we have the final report, we can do that piece, and right now, we're anticipating it'll be in the month of January.
Thank you, sir. Town administrators' report, is there any highlights you wanna share with us, Holly?
Did wanna just say that we've been working on a new website, that's in the process of going live, actually, this evening. So the, the purpose of the website is to have a, a more of a responsive design, so that citizens can access it through their cellphone. Um, and it's just a little more mobile-friendly, and with the hopes of consolidating information to disseminate it to the public.
Yes, indeed. Please.
Holly, um, would you mind, um, explaining the, the rental program a little bit, um, and how the town is unrolling, is unfolding that?
So, Connie and I have been working with CommKate, which is the, uh, software that Connie's currently using for code enforcement, so that she can actually build out the rental program, the licensing program, so that we have a, a way to manage it, so we're in the process of rolling that out now, which should be within the next sixty to ninety days before that's live. Um, we're currently in the process of, um, asking residents to submit to the town addresses of properties that are rentals, and how many do we have now, Connie? Late sixty, I think? Right, so, so we have been receiving some submissions of addresses to get the program started, so.
Very good.
Uh, one real, uh, two real quick things, really about the website, first of all, I poked around, it's a nice improvement, so, um, I, I don't know if other people have, I personally like it. I'm just curious, are we using the same contractor, or we changed, or how, how is that working?
It will be actually not contracted out anymore, we will be managing the website in-house now. So it, which was the whole purpose of making the move, so it allows us a little ease of making updates directly, so it's, it's managed in-house through a, a platform.
Which is?
Vivek Waz.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor's report, obviously I've spoken enough already this evening, uh, but it, it, I did wanna report that it, it dawned on me a, a couple weeks ago that, um, it was, it's something about the town council here, the six members of town council that, in, in the three short years that, that this council's been here, the, uh, they've been quite the lucky charm for the Washington area. they've been quite the lucky charm for the Washington area. And I say that because three world championships have came here since you all were elected last time. You know, the Caps and the Mystics, and of course, the most recent one, the Nationals. So I think that's great. I'm celebrating. And then it dawned on me, you know, cautious Pat said in. And I just want to say that if the, if the mayor's from cities like Philadelphia, Buffalo, Chicago, call you guys up, you know, make you an offer, hold out for big money. That's all I want to say. I'm looking for three since you've been here. You get this hat trick in three years, you know? So just hold out, guys. You've been a real lucky charm. And this last one was really, the area really went baseball crazy, you know? And I'm not sure that anybody who's age 50 or over has stayed up till a quarter or 12 so many nights, you know? And, you know, walking into the bank one late morning around like 11, everybody's like, you know, dragging, you know? And the teller said, I don't think, I don't think y'all are used to staying up late, you know? And I said, well, I know I ain't. And I'm retired. And I don't, I'm not. But it was great. And everybody made 11:45 somehow and watched every pitch. And it was just a real, you know, now you know what baseball fever is, you know? It's something else. So congratulations to the council. You got the trifecta. Good job, guys, you know? Don't go anywhere. Stick around, you know? And that's all I have. How could I top that? Resolutions and ordinances. I want to introduce ordinance O-19-15. An ordinance to the town council of Chesapeake Beach repealing in its entirety and reenacting Chapter 25 Ethics Public of the Chesapeake Beach Code to comply with Maryland Code annotated general provisions article total five and to meet the town's need for ethical and efficient government and matters generally relating to public ethics for officials, appointees, and officials of the town. I'm going to set the public hearing for 6:55 on December the 19th. Next, I'm going to introduce ordinance O-19-16. An ordinance of the town council of Chesapeake Beach amending the Chapter 22 Elections of the Town Code to reflect changes over time in various election practices, including voting technologies and to resolve certain ambiguities, my glasses are really gone here, ambiguities and inconsistencies. I'll set the public hearing for 6:57 on December the 19th. And lastly, I'm going to introduce Charter Amendment Resolution CAR 19-2. A resolution of the Town Council of Chesapeake Beach amending the charter of the town of Chesapeake Beach as to the single subject elections to promote the most efficient conduct and administration of town elections and eliminate certain ambiguities in certain provisions with respect to the conduct of elections and the canvassing of ballots. I'll set that public hearing for 6:58 on December the 19th. Thank you. Next, Planning and Zoning. There was a meeting held on November the 13th. That's all I have. Board of Appeals, no meeting was held. Seabox, I think the famous John Bacon is here. patiently waiting. You got some horseradish, maybe?
Well, you've read the report about our, about our Calvert County fifth grade student field trips.
John, who's your lovely assistant back there? I think.
14, no, 1,433 kids this year. Students and chaperones and our teachers. That's an awful lot. It turns out that seniors graduating from high school this year have been to the trail for the oyster program. So we're now complete. And we have looked up our numbers the best we can. More than 7,000 students have come to the trail to learn about oysters, which is a pretty nice thing. And we're getting ready for next year by taking a couple of months off. Jay Barry and some Seabox volunteers went out to the bay the other day to see what was going on with our reef. We were able to purchase a new dredge, a used dredge. And Jay did some nice modifications to it so that we were able to go down in our reef and dredge up our oysters. It turns out that our oyster reef, after the eight years that we've been dumping our 100,000 oysters a year out there, is very healthy and it's growing. And instead of showing you a bomb, I will now show you, rather than talking about it anymore, oysters.
Eight years old, my lord.
Pretty spectacular. This is what they look like, guys.
It's eight years old.
Look at what you started, Keith.
Yeah.
The muscles that have grown on the oysters.
Let's give those eight-year-olds a hand. Good job, young men, young ladies.
And it'll be there for a month. And of course, Community Mural 3 is coming last Saturday and Sunday of January. Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Thank you, John.
Happy Thanksgiving, John.
Yeah.
Sure, Maryland just loves to have them in the house. Economic Development, Larry Jaworski.
Several updates for you just to highlight upcoming events that are related to economic development in the town. First, hopefully you all are aware of these things. Light Up the Town on Sunday, December 1st at 4:30 here at Town Hall. Second is the, I forgot the number, Pat Carpenter Holiday Parade.
December 7?
No, no.
How many years?
Yeah, I forgot. A long time, long time.
Pat passed away in 2012. We lost her in 2012, so I'm going to guess he probably started.
The holiday parade started before that and they renamed it.
That's right.
The Pat Carpenter Holiday Parade. Anyway, December 7th. The Holiday Light Trolley that's sponsored by the Railway Museum is set for Saturday, December 21st. Sign up is going to start on December 1st. And you can go online to the Railway Museum. They should have a sign up on the Railway Museum website. And just to keep, and my colleague, Mr. Morris and I are both going to be on the remediation advisory committee for the Naval Research Lab. And that will hold its first meeting on Wednesday, December 11th on that.
Thanks for stepping up both of yous.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. Twin Beaches Opioid Abuse Awareness Coalition.
Yeah, thank you. A couple announcements. So on October 23rd, we had the More You Know Community Educational Event. This is the flyer from it or the schedule. We had about 120 people show up. It was great. The, this was where we partnered with the Twin Beach Players. They did two original plays. It was awesome. I was there dress rehearsal the night before. They had not had a chance to rehearse in that building. I was a nervous wreck. I was like, oh, my God, are they going to be able to pull this off? But they were like, yes, man. And the night of the performance, there wasn't one flaw. And, and I really appreciate the mayor, Pat Mahoney, and of course, Mayor Benton for both attending that. They really got a kick out of it.
They were very talented.
They were, they were. And so, you know, that was, let me thank everybody. I want to thank the Twin Beach Players. I want to thank the authors of those plays who were, let's see, Ashley Vernier and Cameron Walker did another, wrote another beautiful Soul Lost. And then Paige Plater wrote Life is Hard Exhale. And so they were both excellent plays. Also want to thank Sherry Lennon, the director of the youth troupe for the Twin Beach Players. And of course, their board and everyone involved with their group for pulling this together. They did a wonderful job. I also wanted to thank Sandy Mattingly. She took the lead with coordinating with them for the, for our group. And she did a wonderful job as well. And, and she and, let me find her name here. There it is. Megan Sarakaya provided input on how to make the play more real. So Sandy lost her son at 20, when he was 21, to the opioid crisis to an event. And Megan has been battling opioid addiction and now works for the Calver County Health Department in recovery support. So they were providing some kind of real-life information to the playwrights there as well as doing a lot more. But, you know, we did this to try to raise awareness about the issue and to get people talking about it. And it was really great to hear at the Halloween event then at the Northeast Community Center, a parent came over to our table and said, you know, thank you really for pulling, pulling this together because I took my son, he's a teenager, to see this. And he was really, she could tell by looking at his face while they did the second play about opioid addiction where someone overdoses, goes to the hospital, goes through rehab. And then the play kind of ends with another, with that person overdosing again. And you're not really sure, did they die or did they make it through? And so it encouraged them to have a conversation later that night about addiction. And he was, ended up telling her, he said, I had no idea. I thought once you went through rehab, you were cured, you were done. And it was over. And it's like, I didn't know you could just, you know, that you were still had those cravings and still could be pulled back into it. And he was like, I'm going to tell my friends, so hopefully they aren't involved. But, but that's what we want. That's what we want. You know, we wanted kids learning about this. We want parents and children talking about this issue. So I think it was a huge success by that. And of course, I thank the town for providing pizza and other food for that event. So, and let's see, anything else? Yes, we have our next meeting, December 10th here at 6 o'clock. And I think that's all I have for tonight.
Well, not all. I want to personally thank Keith for all his efforts that he did in this. You know, three years ago, when, you know, we were all elected, Keith asked me, he brought it up and I pretty much said, I support anything. I support you, Keith. And I'm thinking, I don't know what you're going to do, but I support you, you know? And like anything else, it started, things start out slow, things start out rough. You get a couple volunteers and you really don't know where you're going to go with this when you have a meeting and there's three people every month or whatever it is, you know? But it seems to me, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I've been to a few of your events, the community, not just this zip code, but you know, North Beach and just the outline areas have really, you know, grabbed this and said, yeah, we want you, you know? We want to be a part of this. Thanks for what you started up and here. But we're going to help you go places, you know? And the awareness factor, we're all just, you know, I don't know what your expectations were, Keith, but I'm going to assume you, you know, exceeded them. And I'm not, you know, whenever a community grabs you by the heart and says, we love you, we want you, thank you, it's got to be emotional and rewarding and you don't expect it, you know? And I've just sat in the back a few times and just witnessed the way people are just, you know, grabbing all this. And they want to know. And they're learning things that they didn't know. And they're, and they're obviously talking, you know? And I think that was the point. Yeah, definitely. So I applaud you for, you certainly exceeded my expectations. And I'm glad that we all agreed, you know, support this, you know?
Yeah, definitely. Thank you.
So, so I'll, I'll end on a good note on that one. Yeah. Thank you, sir. Walkable Community Advisory Group, Mr. Fevre is not here.
I can, I can speak to that.
That's right. Here with us now.
Just a couple of quick notes. I think I should start with, I'm humbled by that talk that Keith just gave. We do some good things in Walkable Community and I'll talk about those, but that's strong work. So, so we have moved forward with a contractor, RKK. And there's a woman who is our main contact. Her name's Melissa. If anyone has met her or sees them around town, they are looking and measuring and doing all kinds of prep work to put together two big things. One is a document that, that the committee hopes will make it into the comprehensive plan. And then the committee also hopes will be received well by this body. And also to guide us in having design-ready, grant-ready material that we can use to seek out funding if and when we're fortunate enough to have some approval on some of these plans. It's really strong work. We had a sticker board up at the Taste of Beaches, got a lot of great feedback. They were in, in the conference room here. I don't know if we might want them out and we might consider putting them out in the lobby at some point. But it's great work. If you see them around town or if you have questions about some of the projects, please ask us. Don't make assumptions that, that, you know, we're changing anything that you don't want. But, but take a look at some of the ideas. And I think it's really positive work they're doing. I salute the amount of time that the folks on that committee have put into the project.
Thank you, Charlie. Okay, you do a much better job than Derek, by the way. Yeah, well, now don't pick on him. Don't pick on him for that, you know? The tall guys are always zinging us, you know? Okay, okay, okay. No unfinished business. New business, Town Council to appoint Jonathan Evans to the Planning and Zoning Board. Is there a motion to approve?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And the ayes have it. Town Council to award $34,224.61 to Beltway Paving for general paving. Is there, is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
And the ayes have it. Council to award LB Water Incorporated $50,000 for the purchase of water of meter reading software upgrades.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And the ayes have it. Town Council to award $15,000 to Blue Earth Products for cleaning of filter number one at the Water Reclamation Treatment Plant. So moved?
Second.
I just want to make a comment regarding the guarantee provided by Blue Earth Labs. I spoke with John prior to the meeting and the 70% to 90% removal would hopefully meet the expectations that we talked about.
So, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
And the ayes have it. Thank you. Council to award $11,295.52 to Eastern Controls for clarifier sensors at the Water Reclamation Treatment Plant.
Moved to proof?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And the ayes have it. Next, we'll ask, is the, anybody in the public have it, any comments? Please come forth.
Answer your question. It was at Harbor Drive.
Harbor Drive.
Harbor Drive, back in the boatyard.
Okay.
Thank you, sir. Council Lightning Round. I'll start with the Vice President.
Yeah, I'd like to say a happy Thanksgiving to everyone. And I would like to let you be aware of the next Twin Beach Players Play, which is closed for the holidays and it opens the day after Thanksgiving. So Friday, a week from Friday, a week from tomorrow. It runs for three weekends, Fridays, Saturdays, and Sundays. And it's a lot of our town kids and adults are in the play.
And we'll, we'll post it on the emails and that sort of thing.
Great. I'll give you the information if you don't have it.
That's all I remember to go. Very well. Sir.
Just a little more hometown fun. I had a friend in town from big old New York City. And she was completely smitten with the lights that were teasing her as we drove into town. I said, you got to come back when these babies are lit up. So we are entering my favorite time of year.
Indeed.
I just wanted to again say everyone, happy Thanksgiving. And I just wanted to congratulate my colleagues on the council here that this marks the end of our third year together. And we seem to be playing well together for three years and hopefully it lasts for one more.
Very well. Thank you, sir. Very well. Thank you, sir. Councilman Morris.
Yes, I'd like to comment on the work that Keith and so many others have been doing, the Twin Beach Opioid Awareness Committee. Just the advertisements that go out with the events that you plan. I know a lot of work goes into that and you hope that there are strong turnouts, but I just wanted to reinforce the fact that just having these discussions affects things, many people are affected that weren't necessarily even there. I'm having discussions with my son, the son's about, these things are going on, and even though they're not interested in trying to go and they're teenagers, it's hard to drag them there, it's still, we're having a conversation. And I think that's a real, that's a strong thing. And echo colleague Charlie Finks' comment that Christmas is my favorite time of the year, too. Looking forward to getting the Christmas lights up. I see somebody's going to be busy tomorrow putting up a Christmas tree because the oyster shells get hung in there shortly. And that's so uniquely this town, that the oyster shells on the trees is just awesome. And then, I wanted to take a moment to the first responders that were here tonight, folks. I know that everybody knows and had their experiences regarding the fire. I wanted to share a personal experience that I had. I was, that night, I was supposed to meet president of the HOA in Bayview Hills, Eric Bromley. Eric Bromley, they had Mama Lucia's. And I was sitting there, and it was around 6 o'clock, and I was just completely unaware that there was anything going on. And I got a phone call from Eric Bromley, and he says, "Mr. Morris, I'm not going to be able to make it tonight. I'm here at the fire." And when I tell that story, it was just such a remarkable individual to do that. I'm going to always remember that, that he took the time to call me to let me know he couldn't make it, and he's at a fire. Just amazing individuals. There's so many of them in this town, and really, everybody in the town's amazing. And I hope everybody has a great Thanksgiving. Thank you.
Before I go to Keith to end, since we have a councilman from North Beach here, I'll have to share my story of that night, too, because I was leaving a Nationals game. They were playing the Phillies. It was early, and they beat the Phillies. And I was driving in a car, and I get a call from Jay about the, and I tried to blow him off because I was in traffic, but he wouldn't let me blow him off. And so, we crossed this bridge, and I'm trying to, so, you know, we all, I'm trying to give my phone to my poor, loving wife and say, "Call this one, call that one there," you know? And it finally dawned on me, because I was probably barking at her, which is really a bad thing to do if you intend to stay married for any period of time. And I said, "Listen," I said, "Well, you know, call Mike Benton." I said, "That's what," and she says, "Okay." And I said, "Mike," I said, blah, blah, blah. I said, "You got the same rolodex I do. So, whoever you think you would call, if this happened in your town, please call them for me." And that's what Mayor Benton did. I didn't know what else to do, but, you know, call the other mayor and say, "Call who you think," and he knows as many people around as I do. So, he did, and I guess everybody has their story, but since Mickey was here, I thought I'd give his mayor some props, but.
Mr. Mayor, I'll just point out that you're showing your age.
Yeah, I know, I know. I kind of, you know, you're right, you know? I show my age when I walk in the room. Keith, would you bail me out here?
So, I wanted to thank Nancy McAllister. She is a biologist educator and inspirational speaker. She was here about two weeks ago and gave a presentation called Mom's Big Year, and it was about her struggles to overcome a difficulty in her life and how she used nature and birding to do that. It was, we had about 20 people come and hear it, and my understanding is that talk is or that presentation will be on the website soon. So, if you missed it and you want to see it, take a look. One caveat, though, because the slides are on the side, you can't see them in the presentation because the camera shoots right down the middle. But otherwise, it's still pretty good. She's a pretty good speaker. So, I do appreciate her coming here and doing that for us, and have a great Thanksgiving.
Wonderful. Is there motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any ayes have it?
Give me a text mail chain.
Give me a Derek. Yes, we'll figure it out. Thank you. Yes, sir. If you can.
If we didn't know until a couple, three weeks ago.
Have it all. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I'm going to give you.